6:30 p.m. on Tuesday, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, July 5th, 2023, calling to order our 6:30 public hearing for zoning case 2023-07TC. Mr. Ukarter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is case 2023-07TC. It was initiated by the Board of Trustees on May 16th, 2023. At the June 12th, 2023 meeting, the zoning commission voted to approve, or voted a recommendation of four to zero to approve the tax change with one member abstaining. No changes were proposed except for a condition that sought clarification to include language related to the Hamilton County Prosecuting Attorney in Section 24-4.2 of the proposed tax change. The Prosecutor's Office has reviewed the matter and suggested that the following language appear in Section 24-4.2. This will appear as a condition at the end. Instead of the Hamilton County Prosecuting Attorney, it would be changed to the Hamilton County Prosecuting Attorney at his or her discretion. The Hamilton County Sheriff's Office has been consulted related to the proposed tax change. It's discussed with Lieutenant Tarr. The Sheriff's Office would not assume an investigative role related to the proposed tax change. If the tax change were enacted, their sole and only role would be to serve criminal citations. Related to this tax change, it's a tax change to amend the zoning resolution to allow for criminal misdemeanor citations and penalties. Currently, the zoning resolution only considers civil remedies. The tax change, it would amend chapters 13, portions of chapters 13, 16, and 24. I would stress that whether a civil or criminal remedy or enforcement posture remains the same, that, you know, we will work with residents and endeavor backwards to seek a resolution before we would ever have to seek a judicial remedy. With that, are there any questions?
I don't have any questions.
If I recall in some of the discussions previously, this is, if I'm not mistaken, Larry, this is something that a lot of municipalities are now incorporating into their zoning code?
Well, some of them in this area are. Hamilton County has a housing court.
Uh-huh.
And they won't take civil cases in the housing court. So it's a, if I would classify it as a minor misdemeanor, it could be civil, it could be criminal. If we say that it's criminal, the housing court will take it, and that's an easier way, a quicker way in a lot of occasions to get the problems remedied.
Very good. Thank you.
For a recommendation, staff recommends approving the tax change proposed in case 2023-07TC with the following condition. In Section 24-4.2, a change in language, again, changing the Hamilton County Prosecuting Attorney. It would be changed to the Hamilton County Prosecuting Attorney, comma, at his or her discretion. And that came from Mr. Friedman at the Prosecutor's Office.
I think he said that her or his.
Yeah.
Because it's a her.
Currently, it's her, yes.
Yes.
Did I say just his?
You said his or her.
Okay.
I said her or his.
Her or his at the moment.
Yes.
It is her or his. It's changed.
With that, that's all I had.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
Do I?
I'll be here to address this.
I don't have any, no one is here for any kind of public comment. So with that, if there's nothing else, the group, I will close the public hearing, and we will resume at 6:45 for a public hearing regarding the 2024 tax budget. Meeting closed. Meeting adjourned at 6:34.
2023-07TC with the following condition. In Section 24-4.2, a change in language, again, changing the Hamilton County Prosecuting Attorney. It would be changed to the Hamilton County Prosecuting Attorney, comma, at his or her discretion. And that came from Mr. Friedman at the Prosecutor's Office.
I think he said that her or his.
Yeah.
Because it's a her.
Currently, it's her, yes.
Yes.
Did I say just his?
You said his or her.
Okay.
I said her or his.
Her or his at the moment.
Yes.
It is her or his. It's changed.
With that, that's all I had.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
Do I?
I'll be here to address this.
I don't have any, no one is here for any kind of public comment. So with that, if there's nothing else, the group, I will close the public hearing, and we will resume at 6:45 for a public hearing regarding the 2024 tax budget. Meeting closed. Meeting adjourned at 6:34.
7:00 PM on Wednesday, July 5, 2023. I'd like to call the regular trustee meeting to order. If everyone will please rise for the invocation given this evening by Mr. Rudolph.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege we have of gathering together as a free people in a free land to govern ourselves according to the dictates of our conscience as it is guided by the law. Bless all the people here this evening and the proceedings of our meeting. May all we do and say here tonight, Lord, be pleasing to you. As in your name we pray. Amen.
Is there man standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dieters, I'm going to ask you to call the roll this evening.
Mr. James.
He's not present.
Ms. Schwagman.
Ah, present.
Mr. Weedman.
Present.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the June 20, 2023 trustee meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Ms. Weedman.
Aye.
Public comments are next on the agenda. Mr. Ucarter.
There are no public comments.
No public comments. Means it's, you're up. Mr. Tar.
Just wanted to let know the security detail for the festival is almost filled. All six spots, excuse me, are filled for Saturday and five of the six for Friday. We're still working on it.
Oh, great. Awesome.
And then we got the other, we have an officer that'll stay overnight, so.
Well, you do. Perfect.
Oh, that's great.
Yep. Yep. So we got that filled too. So if we don't get that fifth, that six spots filled on Friday, we'll just have the cars in the area that are at work. Shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
That's great news. Thank you very much. Chief, EMS and Fire Department, fire report.
I just have for your consideration for hiring two part-time firefighters, Jacob Blackburn and Matthew Peterson. Their start date can be July 12, I believe. Just a motion. That's all we need for that.
Jacob Blackburn and who's the other?
Matthew Peterson.
We need a motion here, Larry.
Yeah, we need a motion and you're going to put in the power they pay.
It'll be the same as all the rest of them, the 21 an hour.
We include that in our motion?
Yes.
What, 21?
21 an hour.
Can I make a motion that we hire Jacob Blackburn and Matthew Peter- Peterson as part-time firemen at the rate of $21 per hour?
Second. Any discussion?
Uh, chief?
Hmm?
What does that bring us to on part-timers?
Five.
Five?
Yes. And I got another one doing an agility test Friday, so hopefully I'll have one, possibly two for the next meeting.
Good.
That's great.
And what are we doing for turnout gear for these guys?
So far, we've been doing pretty good.
Good.
But we're, we're getting to the point where we're not, yeah.
You're close. All right, good.
But I will say that these, that three out of the five right now are in process of hiring, getting hired full-time from other departments. I don't know how long they're going to last, but take them while we got them.
Young, right?
Oh, yeah. They're right out of the, right out of the academy.
So, I mean, these guys, these guys might be willing to.
They might. I'm hoping.
Like the old times, right?
Yeah, I'm hoping to.
All right, that's all the questions.
All right, Mr. Dieters.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Ms. Weedman.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Mr. Ucarter, planning and zoning report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few resolutions for this evening. The first resolution was from our zoning case 2023-07TC. It relates to contemplating criminal misdemeanor remedies for zoning violation cases. A resolution approving tax amendments to the Sycamore Township zoning resolution and dispensing with a second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Dieters.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
The second resolution on the docket is, it's a companion resolution that amends the property maintenance code to do similar things to, as the resolution that was just passed for the zoning resolution, it allows for criminal misdemeanor remedies in the matter of property maintenance cases. I think as a matter of practice, the township staff would not, if we were to pursue a remedy for a property maintenance case, it would be in conjunction with a zoning violation too. It's unlikely that we would leave with a property maintenance violation. So, so for the title, it's a resolution amending the property maintenance code.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Dieters.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
And for some property maintenance cases, we have two. The first one is, the property address is 4110 Estamarie Drive, Tall Grass and a Drunk Refrigerator. Complaint was anonymous. Date of complaint was June 14. Date of violation letter was June 21. The date of last inspection was on Monday. The owner has been unresponsive. No response from the owner. Here, there's the refrigerator that's on its side there, and then just some of the tall grass. So with that, a resolution providing for and authorizing removal of vegetation, garbage, and refuse and other debris, and declaring a nuisance for the property located at 4110 Estamarie Drive, Sycamore Township, Hammond County, Ohio 45236.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
The next case is 1194, 11949 Third Avenue. It's drunk type of violation, junk and trash piled up in the driveway. The complaint was anonymous. Date of complaint was May 31. Its owner occupied. Date of violation went out on May 31. Date of last inspection was on Monday, July 3. The owner has been unresponsive. And then here, just some of the photos.
What's the address on this?
Uh, 11, 11949 Third Avenue.
I think this is a frequent flyer, right?
Um, just some of the trash. A resolution providing for and authorizing removal of vegetation, garbage, refuse, and other debris, and declaring a nuisance for the property located 11949 Third Avenue, Sycamore Township, Hammond County, Ohio 45249.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Rudolph for Roads Maintenance and Recreation Report.
Okay, I'll start out with the Parks and Rec report. The Festival in Sycamore is July 14th and 15th. I would encourage anybody to, that's interested in attending, to go to our website. It's packed full of details. SycamoreTownship.org. Yogan in the Park continues this summer, June through September. On Saturdays, 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM at McDaniel Park. And on Sundays, 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM at Bechtold Park. Classes are free. A quick roads report. The township's 23 road program is scheduled to begin in mid-July. I expect to hear from the contractor this week or next week with a definitive schedule. As soon as that is available, we will post that on our website.
Are we also notifying people on that?
Yes, we did. We sent out letters, I believe, last week.
We did get a letter, but are they going to, I think it was a range of a time when it was going to start? Are we going to actually let them know, look, you can't park cars on the street tomorrow because we're going to be here?
Yes, the contractor will go out a minimum of 24 hours prior to work. We encourage 48 hours in case somebody's out of town or doing something. So we will also send out a social media blast. Yep. The Montgomery Road Sidewalk Improvement Project from Stewart Road to Ken Arbor Road, the lead of construction has completed most of the work on the north side except for a couple curb ramps. They have now switched over to the south side. The project is expected to be finished in about four weeks. So, good progress on that.
It looks good. It looks real, it looks good. It's nice. It's a nice addition.
Yeah. The Euclid Road Sidewalk Improvements from Hosbrook to Michael Drive Engineering Design has begun on this project. Construction will be in mid-24th. And the last update I have on the road report is the School Road and Salzman Road Sidewalk Improvements. So the limits of this project are beginning on School Road on the south side at the Township Sharonville Corp line, continuing to Salzman Road, traveling down Salzman Road on the west side to East Kemper Road. The township solicited RFQs for engineering services. Choice One Engineering was ranked the highest firm for this project. A resolution will be presented tonight for the board to consider moving forward with engineering services. The estimated construction cost is about 1.2 million. The township was awarded Federal Transportation Alternative Grant Funds, TA funds, in the amount of $641,224.
Great.
Construction tentatively mid to late '25.
That's great. It's a 50% match. That's great.
Yeah, 50% match. Yep.
So Steve, on the, on the Salzman, is that going to be, you said, on which side of the street?
Salzman Road will be on the.
It's kind of like the west, right?
West side, on the park side, I'd say. McDaniel Park side, yeah.
Uh, I meant school, sorry.
School side, the school would be on the south side, which would be opposite of.
On the Bishop's Gate side? On the, or Stoli Run side?
Yes.
Oh, really?
Opposite like Fourth Street and opposite High Point.
Okay.
On the park side.
Do we have to navigate across a creek there?
Uh, no.
Where Rich Barrett lives?
Railroad. There's a railroad crossing.
Okay.
Yep. No, no creek.
Okay.
Luckily.
That's good.
Yeah. And then, one, one last update. Gideon Lane Culver Project, Tom, which you're interested in. I'm sure you may have seen some detour signs going up this week. Contractor is scheduled to start July 10.
Good.
Um, we didn't notify all the residents along Gideon Lane and Brittany Woods.
Brittany Chase.
Yep. Brittany Chase, yeah. Off Gideon.
Okay, good.
Yeah. And then it's probably going to be about a 60-day project, 16 to 90. So, uh, plan accordingly.
Good. It'll make a lot of people happy.
Lot of great projects in the pipeline, that's for sure.
Yep. So, one resolution, as I, as we mentioned, would be the, a, for the board to consider, a resolution authorizing a contract with Choice One Engineering Corporation for engineering services and dispensing with a second reading for the School Road and Salzman Road Sidewalk Improvements, federal PID number 119074. The contract price would be for $178,184, which is about 13, 14% of the estimated construction cost.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
And that is all I have for Roads Maintenance and Rec.
That's great. Okay, next up, Larry, Law Director Report.
We have filed our brief in the Landmark Administrative Zoning Appeal. We filed it last Friday. And the, we're going to be arguing it in the Hamilton County Court of Common Pleas on August 24.
Who's the judge?
It's the magistrate, Barrington.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Rudolph, I'm going to bounce it back to you for the administrative report in Mr. Jones' absence.
Yes. We have a, one resolution to present to the board. It was the resolution adopting the Sycamore Township Tax Budget for 2024 and dispensing with a second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Last would be purchase orders over 5,000. Majority of them are for the fire department, all of them. And all these have been allocated, appropriated in our 23 budget. So, read them individually, Larry.
That's what the.
Okay. PO number 23-61-1, blanket vendor, in the amount of $15,000, EMS supplies.
You can read the little section.
Okay, thank you. Second PO would be 23-63-1, blanket vendor for $5,000 for fire uniforms. Next one's 23-64-2, blanket vendor, $5,000 for bunker gear. Next PO, 23-66-5, blanket vendor, $24,053.94 for fire vehicles. Next one, 23-67-3, blanket vendor, $10,000 fire building costs. And the last one, 23-69-1, blanket vendor, $10,000 for fire contract services.
Motion to approve purchase orders as listed.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
That is all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dieters, Fiscal Officer Report.
Yes, we had dispersments of $645,329.21. Cash receipts were $191,099.56. A complete listing of the dispersments and receipts is available in the packet.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Trustee comments?
I don't really have any other than, it was a great Fourth of July. Hope everybody enjoyed it, celebrating our, our US birthday. I have nothing else.
Um, I think my only comments this evening are, Mr. Rudolph already mentioned it, but as a reminder, the Tire Discounters Festival in Sycamore will be in Bechtold Park on Friday, July 14, and Saturday, July 15. We are very pleased with Tire Discounters coming aboard as our title sponsor, so that's very exciting. And we're looking forward to putting on, putting on a great show. And I'm not sure who we put in charge of the weather, but I'm sure they're going to do a great job in keeping Mother Nature in line for us for that fine festival. So we hope you all can come out and enjoy, and enjoy the festival and join us. Second item of business, the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting from Monday, July 17th has been canceled. For all other scheduled meetings and events, please see the published calendar on our website. And with that.
Motion to adjourn.
I will second. All in favor, that would just be us, aye. Meeting is adjourned at 7:19 PM.